I have an order, the City of Statesboro City Council meeting for June 17th. I'm going to ask, Councilman Riggs will not be able to do it this evening, so Councilman Lewis has offered to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
That is great. Well, thank you Father for a day we never seen before in our life. We ask you to stand and keep your loving honor and protection around the people that defend this country. Father, watch over all our law enforcement agents that defend this city also. We also ask you to watch over in hospitals, nursing homes, wherever we need your help, Father. We know without you we cannot stand, but we ask you today, just be a fence around us and protect us as we go in our everyday life. And all these blessings I ask in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for that prayer, Councilman Lewis. Stepping in like that, before we get started tonight, I don't know how many of y'all picked up an agenda, but this is the longest agenda that I've ever presented over. I think it's 21 items in the long consent agenda, so, Grand Willis, we want everybody's voice to be heard and do the public's business in an efficient manner at the same time. So, I'm going to ask, Miss Sue, do we have anybody that has asked to make a public comment on an agenda item?
No ma'am.
Okay. We're going to move to the consent agenda, which is item four. Items A through J, and I'm going to give council a minute to review the consent agenda, and we'll make a motion in just a second.
I wouldn't like to either discuss or pull off E.
Does it come off of any of y'all and do that?
I'm just brief. And then maybe we want to... Was it? I think it was it.
Okay, do I have a motion from council to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E, which will be tabled for later in the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move E to...after item 17. Okay, let's move to item five and open a public hearing for a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute contract services with the Statesboro Arts Council Inc. to Market Downtown Statesboro Road. Do I have anybody that would like to speak in favor? Do I have anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Our public hearing closed, do I have a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract of services with the Statesboro Arts Council to Market Downtown Statesboro Road?
Does it move?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Alvin, um, these next three substantially the same as 2013.
Yes, Alvin, same. Only thing that's changed.
And that applies to five, six, and seven on E yet.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item six, I'm going to open up a public hearing for a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract of services with the Downtown Statesboro Development Authority Main Street, Statesboro Market Downtown, Statesboro. Do I have anybody speaking for? Anybody to speak against? Public hearing is closed, do I have a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract of services with the Downtown Statesboro Development Authority by council?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, open up a public hearing for a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract of services with the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau. Do I have anybody that would like to speak for? I'd like to recognize Mayor Van Castle, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you have a long agenda, I'll be brief. I want to always thank council for the support that we received at CBD, and especially to recognize us as the destination marketing organization for Statesboro. As we grow, one of the things I would like for council to bear in mind, not just this issue, but others, we had 146 million marketing impressions last year, created $4.5 million in state tax revenues, and generated $120 million in direct order revenue. That's big. Here's what's really trying for all that, is as we're growing, the need to continue to grow with all those savings there. So, we appreciate you guys keeping those things in mind as we consider they're not just this budget, but future budgets also. Thanks for all your support and look forward to very good news that is about Statesboro looking at.
Thank you, Chair. Do I have anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Public hearing closed. Do I have a motion from council to authorize the mayor to execute a contract of services with the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Motion approved.
Yeah, excuse me, messed up. Do I have any discussion?
Motion approved.
Okay. Do I have a senator?
Second.
Okay, do I have any discussion, sorry? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item number eight, open a public hearing number two regarding the update to the City of Statesboro Comprehensive Master Plan, and I will target you if you can, please.
We have completed this fast, um, just update to the 2014 Comprehensive Master Plan for the City of Statesboro. The plan was adopted and modified in 2009. Rules of Department of Community Affairs require this mid-level update, a full update, and five more years until you mark. This particular public hearing will take comments and will post the draft on our website. So far, I have not received any comments and take public input. We are transmitting the draft to the Department of Community Affairs and National Commission for Technical Compliance to you, and not necessarily adopting the content of the document at this time.
So, just for clarification, the draft that was given to us will be transmitted to DCA, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And at what point will they come back to you with any suggestion?
I was anticipating, ma'am, that that would happen in the next few weeks, and I won't forget that they are not only defined time long as we work.
Will there be another public hearing before we vote to draft it officially, or...?
This is the last of the required public hearings under regulations. However, we can take in whatever public notification processes you all would like for us.
Do you have a certain date by which time we have to formally adopt that?
No, ma'am, not at the moment.
Okay. Do I have anybody that would like to speak regarding the update to the City of Statesboro's Comprehensive Master Plan? How about you, Councilman Riggs? Would you like to say anything?
You have all my opinion on this thing.
Oh, why not? Okay, in that case, if someone would like to speak, and we will close with this public hearing. Item number nine, public hearing regarding the closure of the remainder of Crescent Avenue and a portion of North Crescent, and I'm going to ask our city engineer, Robert Cheshire, to speak about the title, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I put a map up on the board here, but you've also got this in your package, council. Can you see that? Just want to give a brief history about this closure and the course. Basically, in the immediate area, this is Crescent Avenue. This is Statesboro Baptist Church and their parking lot. East Main sits over here, Zeta Avenue sits here, and Savannah, and right here. Everybody. In the mid-'90s, the Statesboro Baptist Church came to the city and asked to close a portion of Crescent Circle. This is Crescent, this is all that remained of Crescent Circle, you should come through and go to East Main. Council approved the closure and abandonment of the right-of-way, so it was abandoned from East Main. At this point, it was just on the south side of the church's parking lot, as it exists now, and they expanded their building and came across the old right-of-way. Now, at this point, they're asking to close the remainder of Crescent Circle and a portion of what's called North Crescent Avenue, which is here. This is a city street, there's city streets all the way around. There's a city, little grass park sits in here. So, they wanted to close, colorize versions you see here in the cul-de-sac. What will be known as Lot Street all the way here, a little confusion, some of the addresses are actually mixed up here, and that's one of the reasons that I would support the abandonment of the road. It's really cleaning this up because the mayor of the area, this street right here, it ends pretty much in the parking lot of the church, so you can drive through here, and that's just the way it was done in the '90s when it was closed. But they are asking to close this portion and this portion, cul-de-sac this road, so the only remaining public streets would be Crescent Avenue, and then this would be all of Lot Street. These will no longer exist. And a lot of the reason is the church is purchased, y'all tell me if I'm wrong here, this, they have this property, is that right? And this property. And so, really, as far as public access goes, there's really not a reason from the city standpoint to need these two roads anymore, for really maintaining them, and they're pretty much the front, just city property and church property. These are still private, and this area. So, that's what we're for you, is to abandon the section that you see colorized. What we're doing today is a public hearing to hear the pros and cons, for and against, but a resolution would not actually be voted on and passed until the next council meeting, should you desire to do it at that meet. But not really, just to hear who's for, who might be against, and then give a couple more weeks to put together an opinion on. That's all I've got.
Did we have, I guess we've got some folks here from Primitive Baptist that would like to speak in favor of closure? Mr. Maxwell?
Mayor Castle, thanks for allowing me to speak. I'm Joey Maxwell, Maxwell Redmond Sessions, also a member of the Society of Primitive Baptist. With me tonight, I have a couple, three of the deep victims from the church here with me as well. Basically, we're here to answer any questions that you have, or is there any public we have, and answer any questions that comes up during this hearing. We appreciate the consideration of the closures. My main concern is that we have a playground across the parking lot.
Can you go forward down?
Sure. I guess we'll... The church purchased this property, and we have a little playground in this area, and fellowship hall and church sanctuary is this building. During Wednesday night activities, kids are inside the fellowship hall, and they traverse across to the playground area. And with the road open, we have vehicles coming through the parking lot trying to access Zeta Avenue, and it's a danger to the kids from playing. We also have an older congregation, we like to stand up on our lawn. And as doing so, sometimes we have work in front of us, like, this is very rare, this is very rare, it has rocked down at all times. Everyone has been found in thousands of these roads, where they go to, they're just going into the church, and have started not using this strip. So, here to answer any questions that you may have, and any ones in favor of the case.
What, when they're closed off, when some of them are closed off, what do you do with the area? How would you delineate that it's now closed?
We're proposing to place some gates up at the yellow section at Crescent, just to have those closed during those activities. The gates won't be closed until it's 2:00 or 7:00, and it's a technical error in the defense. And it'll be open for pedestrian traffic, for traffic to go through. We're not trying to block off pedestrians from going to downtown. We're just really trying to look for safety. And of course, we can't place gates on public.
Alvin, any reason why we wouldn't do them more reasonable portion of the streets than the park that we call? I mean, as opposed to ending up with that, you know, strange little section, is there any way to, I don't know, just make something a little bit more user-friendly for like a better?
Without abandoning the road?
No, abandon the roads and maybe part of the park, just something a little, I don't know, smooth it out, straight lines, you know, it seems to have that little point there, it seems a little strange.
Right. I think once...
Is there any problem with giving them that little part of that section there, or...?
That's, once the roads, if it's approved to be closed, more than likely, there's going to be discussion about the park itself. So, we have some needs as a part of the CDVG for some drainage, for some easements, but potentially some detention. There's utilities that run through there, so if the roads are abandoned, that'll be the next discussion, since that's city property, we will decide whether we want to formulate, give a portion of that away, or sell in a portion of it and keep in part of it. I think between closing North Crescent on this side and potentially obliterating the asphalt that's there to make that look better, or even tie it into where it makes more sense to the parking lot, and then making this more of a drive and not look like a road, and then do something with the park area, I think it's going to make a lot of sense. It doesn't now, and it wouldn't if we just stopped and put a gate, allowed them to put a gate across here, I think it is going to look strange. But I think if the cul-de-sac is constructed in some fashion, and then something, asphalt lines is removed, and the park is redone, I think it's going to look correct.
Or even if they decided to extend their parking lot now, just for weight, so that they can make their parking lot look like that.
I figure. Like, right now, it's just, you can't really tell whether you're in a street or a parking lot or where you are, and that's part of our reason for supporting it. I wouldn't typically support closing the street, and I like as much connectivity as we can have, but this has just gotten pretty odd.
Agree?
Do I have anybody else that would like to speak during the hearing? Well, I'm going to read it, I'm going to kind of read this to you, Robert, so maybe you can address the concerns. I had a letter that was sent to me today by Dr. Steve Chester, who was ill and could not be here.
Okay.
So, I'm going to read it, and just tell me, you know, you can address his concerns for the record. It said, "In the past, Deborah and I attended a Primitive Baptist Church meeting to discuss", and just so folks in here at the meeting tonight know, Dr. Chester's office is there on Crescent, you might want to kind of hit exactly where his office is.
That's right. Right in there.
Yeah, okay. "In the past, Deborah and I attended a Primitive Baptist Church meeting to discuss what options that we may have as office owners on Crescent Avenue. Mr. Bill Hatcher, Mayor, was in attendance at this meeting. I remember clearly that Deborah and my concerns prevailed in the prior meeting with Mr. Hatcher. If the congregation at the church would like to involve only the parking lot of the church and let the owners of the offices along Crescent Street manage their properties, we would not be opposed to that idea. However, if the owners of the church would like to not only include the parking lot, but the flow of traffic along Crescent Avenue, then we would be opposed to this, as we were opposed years ago." So, I guess I'm not exactly sure what Dr. Chester is referring to, do you know?
I'm not sure that I'm 100% sure, but I recall them having some opposition before, and I think that's why it was not closed off probably before, because they, since the access, since the road was abandoned to East Main, they were allowed, the public could still ride through the parking lot and still have access to Zeta Hour. So, I'm not clear on what he was saying they would be okay with, but I know that they opposed the complete closure of it.
Because the way that I look at it now, there's still, it's a two-way street that can, you know, either end on Savannah Avenue, or what's the street down at the bottom?
Gordon.
Gordon. So, I mean, there's complete access either way on Gordon, right?
That's correct.
From Gordon or Savannah Avenue.
You probably wouldn't have access to Zeta Hour at all times, if I understand the way you're going to do this to get it.
But to get to Zeta Hour now, you have to go to private property.
Yes, that's correct.
So, it's not like it's a clear shot there now.
Yeah, and there's speed bumps there in the parking lot as well.
I know. Think I may have done that cut through once or twice, and found that out.
Why is it loading?
That's why Mayor Moore's got to stop, got to do his parking lot. All right, okay, I just wanted to put that in the record and tell him that the, when the resolution comes up, might need to be a little clearer about exactly what he's referring to. Do I have anybody else that would like to speak in this public hearing? Okay. Public hearing regarding the closure of the remainder of Crescent Avenue, a portion of North Crescent is closed for this particular meeting. When will, Robert, point of record, when will a resolution be on the agenda for this?
Be the next council meeting, if that's okay. I think the resolution is ready, and the only thing that I was going to do from a staff level would be, I'm speaking to Alvin, would be if we wanted to put any special conditions in there, which would be things like we just discussed on the CDVG, to make sure that we got the drainage worked out. But that may be, is that proper in that resolution, or would that be worked out separate?
I believe the resolution would authorize the mayor to execute any documents necessary to obtain utility easements in the property, grant appropriate easements in the property of the utility.
Yeah.
It has some language that says...
But really, I was going to be ready at the next one, unless, you know, there's some opposition, unless there needed to be some discussion, and I'm not sure that I can necessarily come to a resolution with Mr. Chester, other than to understand, have a better understanding of what he was referring to, that they would be okay with. So, I don't know if that's a, they may be coming to see a council member for that.
I'm not entirely sure either.
Okay. I'll have it ready at the next, at the next meeting, if that's what y'all are prepared.
Doesn't affect the CDVG at all, Roger?
I've got the design for that here, engineer. We've had that discussion, and we've discussed it with the church.
That would actually help, I'll project.
How so?
Normally, a project, CDVG, Mr. Morris here, had a drainage issue, and we were addressing his. Now, with the new plan, the accommodation of the church's plan, we'll be able to help Morris, the lot next to Morris, and Mr. Morris's mother, and also this one, because the church would like to move this ditch up to here. And so, that'd help, we'd be able to help in four people instead of four lots instead of one.
I just, can you study, Ron, just remember that we made some adjustments for other, down South Main, that's due for South Ward, that you remember, for the church, a couple years ago.
Yes.
You want me to make some adjustments over, have you, on North Side?
That's correct.
So, when you're doing that stuff, just kind of keep those two in mind, too, I mean, for the churches, you know, I don't understand, but playgrounds are really involved in all of them, I don't think I'm a trigger one, but...
Yep, that's a good point, counsel.
I know, and we need to consider that when you're doing the study, that we pay a deep, then two churches already.
Right.
Make it safe for all churches, that, you know, to sit like that.
Good point, thanks.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Lord, aside. Okay, let's move to agenda item 10, which is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-11, a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding from the City of Statesboro and Campus Communications Group. And I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Clark to speak to that, please.
This is a memorandum of understanding that was put together with the assistance of, as you may recall, we retain, Georgia Municipal Associations of Telecommunications and Enable Management Services, that help advise us on our telecommunications issues. This document was put together for Mr. Fender, who's the consultant in planning and development. This is the agreement we came up with to permit this telecommunications company operate on our right-of-way. This is the fruits of consulting contract, along with the efforts of our planning department. Seems to me with the approval of both campus communications and our telecommunications consultant and our planning department, so that sort of document exists.
Can you explain now what I made? It doesn't matter to me which one do you want to explain it, but exactly what Campus Communications Group is going to be doing.
Campus Communications Group is commonly known as Padlock Media, folks can get these in their advertising, basically. They are going to be laying framework in the public's right-of-way to provide data services, particularly some high-speed video and internet services to some high-density residential areas. Their market really is the student market, the apartment complexes that are primarily oriented to the college students, for really high-speed and independent services, and that's beyond my technical capabilities and understanding, I'll be the first to admit, but they are coming into our right-of-way, and so that right-of-way process is multi-dimensional, and that it really requires some public endeavor, and we have worked for that. And then the franchise is really the compensation that private companies and the private market pays to the public through the city through use of the public property and right-of-way. And what this really, this NOU is, what we would use to call a franchise agreement.
And by virtue of doing this through our consultant, we will have a framework by which to work as we go forward with these agreements, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we should have, that's certainly a goal with Mr. Fender and his group and GMA. We are receiving a great deal more attention from this new data company, Insect Spray, to bring more and more services into our market like this, and that's going to be when our right-of-way, and it's going to call for a reevaluation of our agreement.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, do I have a consideration of a motion to approve resolution, Pet Solution 2014-11?
Second.
Any discussion?
Alvin, is this memorandum of understanding, is this the same as the franchise agreements that we're talking about, contracting with GMA, et cetera, et cetera?
The question of whether it's a franchise agreement is kind of a loaded question. I would say this is a, this is a prisoner, this is our, this is, when they apply to get a license from the state, they apply to certain state ordinance, and part of that ground, that license, they have to agree to abide by rules, regulations, and practices we establish for entering our right-of-way, as screen outlines the procedure of how we manage our right-of-way with GMA.
So, this is a right-of-way agreement, now that's a franchise agreement? Or are they essentially the same thing?
Franchise agreement, I believe, has certain technical meanings in the law, so I wouldn't call it a franchise agreement. So, it is, it defines how they can access our right-of-way, it defines our practices when it comes to them accessing our right-of-way. And under state laws, since they've asked for this license, they have to comply with our procedures for entering the right-of-way. Franchise agreement's a little different kind of animal, legally.
Okay, I guess my next question is, do we have other right-of-way agreements with our other cableers that are throughout the city and throughout our right-of-way?
They're not really a cable provider, as I understand it, but we can have certain franchise agreements with cable companies.
Okay.
We do have a franchise agreement with Northland Cable that we are under at this time. So, going forward, in dealing with companies that are selling to Campus Communications, we will have this kind of agreement with them.
I guess that's why I wanted an explanation of the difference between, say, Campus Communications and somebody that's bringing video, because it is two different things when it comes to contracting with.
Right, and it's a classification of the technology that's sort of getting in front of, so you're trying to keep people into a 20th century form of these, 21st century technology, I believe. Some companies can come in and call themselves a cable, a cable company, and apply for a different... different kind of license under the state law, and they're not always in the same basket.
So for lack of a better description, this is an internet-only cable company, it's a data-only company?
That's right, they're, they're more like a telephone than a cable. But they don't really have telephones anymore either.
And basically, and basically, the way it works is they, by state law, they pay us by the foot.
They're gonna pay us, apparently, they're gonna pay us by the foot, or by the mile right-of-way, as they're used, because they're not traditional telecommunications providers.
But you will see on the telecommunications contract, there's a percentage of revenue.
If they have certain kinds of users here, if they, if they're in fact providing some sort of telephone service, and as I understand it, they don't meet the definition of telephone, because even though you pick up something that looks like a telephone that's going over the internet.
Okay, but then I have one more question. Do we have other MOUs with other data companies? Or is this one of the first ones?
This is probably one of the first ones, and, and this is the main reason we brought in the telecommunications consultant, to help us navigate this just regulatory minefield.
Bobby Walsh, that is the answer?
Yes.
So just in case others didn't hear what you just said, we're in a regulatory minefield.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-11?
Second.
Any discussion?
So how much is this gonna bring in?
I think around $15,000.
$15,000 is all of this, three miles worth of 5,000 miles, what the state allows us to charge.
That's good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, addendum 11 is a consideration, and I'm, I want to just defer to Phil to ask questions, consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014 dash 14, which is a resolution of the City of State, which is a council authorized American franchise, applicable to holders of cable and video franchises issued by the state of Georgia. Again, I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Lee Hart, to speak to this item.
This would be a recommendation from the consultant, do we adopt this kind of resolution? I think what this is, is if some, if a cable company comes in and applies for, they can either come in and ask for a franchise agreement, or they can ask to travel under this state franchise, because we've established the fee that they're going to pay under state law. This, this will be sent to the Secretary of State's office, so they will know that they're charging 5% based on the gross revenues if you apply to be a cable provider under the state statute. So somehow, I think, the consultant suggests we do on our cable and video franchise.
Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014 dash 14?
Motion approved. Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, moving to agenda item 12, which is a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014 dash 16, a resolution adopting fiscal year 2015 budget assumptions for the City of State for, I am going to ask City Manager Parker to please enter into discussion on this.
Thank you, Chair. The budget assumptions are including, I get, and these budget assumptions, as well as the six-year capital approval, are part of them, is, uh, these assumptions are what drives that next year budget, and as far as number, is, 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 every year, and certainly be, be that good, and discuss, you know, any or all of the capsule that we discussed, there's maybe thirty or so, which is a particular that would like to be discussed, so certainly entertain questions, and we'll discuss that. You know, I might add, this is a footnote, of course, the budget process each year is not exact science, some things automatically adjust themselves, for instance, expenses with the S department, the more get, the bad, the more expenses associated, but more revenues, so, you know, that's a, a, a constant adjustment. Same thing happens with court revenues, as court revenues increase, court expenses increase, and you never know from, from time to time, but also, in this process, the, uh, and when we do the budget, we don't have the final figures as far as the budget from the county, for instance, this year, they have until July, so, field assessments, evaluations on the property from the county, then they have scheduled hearings, and then they, at that point in time, hopefully, you know, by, around the first, shortly, they have to work out, file, file, that just, so we try to be somewhat conservative, in that regard, let me sort of refer back to the current year, and you can, you know, kind of see what the adjustment, at this point in time, we, truly, we had eleven quarts of our budget, and so basically, ninety-one point sixty-seven percent of budget, and at this point in time, the, we collected of our projected revenues, ninety-five point fifty-four percent, we spent ninety-one point ninety-six percent, as far as expenses is concerned, so, on, this, this is just a job I'm referring to, but at this point in time, on thirteen million, one hundred thousand dollars of revenues, twelve million, six hundred thousand of what the, it expenses, we, uh, revenues exceed, uh, excuse me, expenses exceed projections by thirty-nine thousand, that's on twelve million dollars, so pretty close, revenues were a little bit better, we actually, uh, we received a little over five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenues and what we proportionally projected, but we won't have all the same revenues for the last month, we still have alcohol licenses coming in, but we'll have slightly greater expenses in revenues for the last month, and, but we still should come in, almost on that as far as budget, and that's, and all the folks that work with the budget, we want to hit a credit, particularly, finance, the senior west, but all the workers that work on that budget, uh, do a really good job, but, yeah, but there's always gonna be a little bit of flex, just because, again, some things are constantly being adjusted, rather, you know, as it's said with the S, or higher meaning tickets get written in finance of forfeiture versus expenses associated, those sorts of things. So that's kind of where we are, and that's, in these assumptions, what we base the budget on. With that?
Uh, one thing, um, we kind of spoke about at the budget hearing was kind of what we were gonna do with the raise, um, and then, we have a eight-hour budget hearing, and the only thing that makes the newspaper, across the top, is budget discussion, which is good, I guess. Um, so, I guess the, kind of the topic was, we even discussed it, um, a good bit that day, we had a lot of, some of our senior staff offer their opinions of some such, some items. The budget assumption here is one thing, and then, I think the, the thing that we kind of talked about and came up with, when we left there, Mayor and I had been spoken once before, um, I've talked to a couple of councils, talked to City Manager a little bit, was, I guess I had a couple of questions first, there's a, on here, there's a two-and-a-half percent equals a step, is that exactly the same thing? Is it always two-and-a-half, the way it's written in the plan?
As far as step, that's correct, as far as grade.
So no people's steps are three, and some are one and one and eight, or anything like that?
They're all two-and-a-half.
All right, so the idea then is, kind of after listening to some of the department heads, is they felt that we needed to put the step back in, we've not put a step in, and one of the problems that we have had by not putting a step in, step in is you hired someone, since steps have been frozen, the next guy comes on at the same exact amount, so that's kind of an issue. Um, so the idea for hourly wages, to leave them a step in, was absolutely agree, um, and felt that, I agree with that, that that needed to happen, probably to fix some things in the future. And then the next thing was, ah, salaried employees have a 1% cost of living adjustment. Um, we have, we have continued to add more and more, uh, there was a, I'm a big fan of the, of the bonuses, instead of having raises, because the bonus doesn't affect you later on, um, but if that's the, if that's the way the council, it seems, a couple of the council felt that the raise was important, so the way that I would recommend that we adopt this is a two-and-a-half percent, seven increase for all salaried employees, and a 1%, uh, 1%, if 1% increase for all salaried employees, and a 2.5, 2.5% raise, not even called a raise, really, it's a step increase.
Whether you want to call it, it would be a step increase.
It would be a step increase, so we're actually giving everyone a step increase.
Let me, uh, well, again, let me have to give some additional figures, and then maybe to address that, uh, in the, as far as hourly employees, the payroll, eight million, three hundred and sixteen, one ninety, a two-and-a-half percent would be two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, uh, and that does not include overtime, so with overtime on salary, of course, that two-and-a-half would be injected into that, so there's, uh...
Can you repeat?
About two-hundred and sixty...
Repeat what, what you just said, you know, uh...
Okay, uh, for the, for the hourly employees, is, and it puts, like, two-hundred and fifty and two-hundred and sixty employees, the payroll, eight million, three one six, one nine zero, two-and-a-half percent, two hundred and seven, nine oh five, that does not include the overhead with the, uh...
Over, overtime.
That's, that's an, that's an annual, that's an annual.
Right.
That's the annual. Uh, as far as salary is concerned, uh, the, for the forty-eight salaried employees, the salary is two million, seven thirty-six, eight sixty-nine, and a two-and-a-half percent is sixty-eight thousand, four twenty-two. Now, injecting, injecting into that, a number of, uh, of employees make more than their supervisor, a number of hourly people, not even injecting overtime into the equation, make more than their supervisor.
The overtime issue is something that I think we're gonna have to continue to discuss, if we, I'm not, I'm not willing to allow the, I'm a salary, I'm a, I am a hourly employee, but because of my overtime, I make more than my supervisor to be involved in this situation. That's what the manager put in this.
I'm not giving any overtime.
Well, I'm just saying that, no, you just said that, you said not, you said with the hourly wages and supervisor.
I said, hourly wage, supervisor, and, and on this, it's just longevity, that's nothing to do with overtime. So just on these figures, that's only having to do with longevity, that's, certain people make more than their supervisor, that's not injecting overtime into the equation, so that takes...
So, so to be clear, to be clear, they make more than their supervisor who is salaried, not hourly?
Hourly, in some cases, make as much as ten thousand dollars more than their supervisor.
Because of longevity.
Because longevity, and, and also injecting into as far as overtime.
But, but getting rid of the overtime, I'm just talking about baseback.
That's correct.
Is because they're up on the scale on longevity.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
But not, their grade is not high. No, no, no salary, their grade should not be higher for a, for a supervisor's employee, in my, my reading, is incorrect.
grade higher, correct.
Okay, but longevity occurs in every single thing, if you've got someone that, you hire a kid straight out of college, twenty-three years old, he's a manager, he's managing people that have been in the company for forty-five years, the forty-five-year guys are gonna be making more than that. That is how it is in the, the real world.
Correct, that's right.
So, so I'm not, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna get into the, as long as that grade is not there, and we've had some folks say that, that their supervisor was making less than that, that does occur, if the reason why you're making more is because you've been there considerably longer.
If, if you take the, uh, the highest-paid hourly employee, as several, because it's several at that level, uh, there's a, there's twenty-four, and I'm counting again, overtime, there's twenty-four salaried employees that make less in that, the, and, and there's twenty-four that make more than that.
Got you.
Um, but, and again, and I mention overtime because it is important in the equation, because salaried employees get no overtime, hourly employees do, so again, you may...
Who's giving the overtime to the, to the hourly employees? That's an easy answer.
Of course, uh...
They're supervisors.
Safety is, is the answer, but the obvious answer is, uh, you know, whatever events happen to you, it's fine to...
Right, but, but the supervisor is still assigning them the orders.
Uh, yes and no.
Well, it could be yes and yes.
Someone, someone on a regular schedule that out, that building over, building over...
That person does manage.
That's correct.
Right, so I mean, it's not, it's not one of these people, it's not one of us up here handing, just handing out overtime, the manager and the supervisor are the ones doing the overtime.
Well, in some cases, in some cases, it's council, for instance, you give a couple of examples, if you, on PD, you twelve on, you thirty-six off, twelve on, thirty-six off, that's been established and proved by council, so, you know, you, you work your shift and then you all three, you work your shift and you all three, that builds up overtime, same thing with firing, so some, it's not necessarily the supervisor, and again, some of the...
I don't want to fix that tonight, but we can fix that tonight, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think we want to fix that.
Hey, you started a recommendation.
Maybe it's not a recommendation, it's from our department heads, yes. Right. I don't say we just came up here and said, this is the way you're gonna do it, I mean, department heads came to us and said, hey, how do we want to, you know, get, so I wouldn't say it's top-down.
Part of it has to do with, some of the folks who assign, maybe you can speak to, but, uh, certain departments have people on call, uh, then to generate overtime, okay, if they get a call, whatever, so, again, some of the departments that generate a fair amount of overtime, of course, it's safety, I don't think, the window's open if he wants to dress air guns, why, as far as more to show, but certain times, or man, they create overtime.
Right, well, we'll, that'd be something we'll definitely, I mean, I think we talked about it, that, that's probably something there that we need to have a better understanding of.
I agree.
On exactly overtime, I, I, I think that, since the discussion that started, the overtime is coming up a lot, and I don't know if we have a handle on that as well, so...
I agree.
And, and I'm, I think that answer probably, and when we brought it up one time before, that answer probably needs to come from outside, I don't know who, Georgia Southern may be able to do that, uh, VCTAC, East Georgia, South Union, someone may be able to help us with that, to figure out, you know, are we in line with overtime, are we not, and that way the overtime discussion doesn't get brought up as much as it does, unless it's a emergency situation, we have a run, or we have a, we have to call people in because they're doing their job, and then overtime becoming part of their everyday work, I think that's something that, I don't think we're planning for that few years.
Total salaries for the city, roughly eleven million dollars, eleven million, fifty-three thousand, and, um...
Is that just, is that just wages, or is that equally overhead? Does that include the extra cost of insurance, the extra work, uh, you know, all that kind of stuff, that goes up because you're paying more than...
The, this is salaries.
So it's not by, or is that...
So it's not the total cost, there's additional costs involved with raising these salaries?
Well, uh, uh, some, some of, you know, fixed costs is also up with, with the...
Sure.
Some, but, uh, so, like I said, total salary level is eleven million, fifty-three thousand.
I mean, eleven million, eleven million does not include our X amount of overtime, currently...
Down contribution, not, not, not overtime.
That's correct, that's correct, and so a step increase, uh, for the city would be approximately two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So this two-and-a-half for some salary, some hourly employees is gonna be more like a three or a three-and-a-half.
How do you get that?
They just don't know the overtime they're currently getting, because they're gonna get two-and-a-half on one hour.
Some, some are getting overhead, right, these departments can certainly address why they're talking about getting overtime and what, you know.
I'll, I'll tell you where I have a concern, is that you're always gonna have young managers that come in, there are gonna be supervisors of folks that have been there a while, that have chosen, for whatever reason, to perhaps aren't a manager or supervisor, and so, you can't skew your pay to always accommodate for that, you can't. I mean, I can tell you from, in, in the education world, there was this thing at one time that, you know, you couldn't have a principal come into a building that didn't make as much as your highest-paid teacher, well, you might have a teacher, now they've gotten a PhD or an EDD, and chose, you know, to, to, to go up the step in, in the Georgia merit pay, and they had hit their spirits, and they were making as much as the superintendent, but that's because they've been for thirty years and they've gotten a PhD or an EDD, and so, no, you can't bring in a... And so, no, you can't bring in a, a new principal and say, without principal experience, we've gotta up you to that, just because you've got somebody on your staff that's got longevity in a position, and by virtue of the pay scale that we set up, earn that. And so it would concern me that when you're looking at, as you do pay, and I'm not saying anything other than, I don't wanna base raises on the fact that we've gotta outpace somebody that's been there thirty years, because they make more than a young supervisor that comes in and has not put in twenty years or twenty-five years.
That's not how this pay plan came about, uh, they planned that C-6 were hired from University of Georgia, you know, to come in and study the pay plan for the C-6 paper, and developed this plan with a step increase each year every year, and we did that until about, uh, pardon me, five or six years ago. Uh, there was a step increase each year every year, and that was a recommendation, you know, of the, of the study that was done. Well, then because of financial reasons, that was discontinued, and now because of the financial conditions, my recommendation is once again, start that, uh, step increase.
And I'm saying, I'm not sure the step increase is actually what's, what's warranted, what is warranted is according to the, adhering to the department heads is, you need the space in there from a new hire, kind of guy that's been there three, four, five, six years, he needs some room, because when you go hire a new guy, he's making the same money. So that's one reason why I put this in, one reason why I'm, I'm first bringing in the two and a half percent for hourly employees.
On the flip side also, we've had a couple of instances where folks have refused advancement because when they moved from, from hourly to salary that they could pay up, so they don't do that, uh, in, in, in a couple of cases, we've had, uh, folks asked about, uh, moving back to a level they were at pre- previously, so without some sort of, uh, give-
And that's because of their, because of the overtime?
Uh-
Because that could only be for overtime because the grade is more much.
That's not where it's at.
Not it?
But also, and you have this, you got, your basis that you have now is the whole, and it hasn't looked at a long time, and over the course of the last few fiscal years, you've given a percent here for salary, you've given a two percent here for hourly overtime, that hurts the decompression with your pay system. For example, Special Police Department Sergeant is a shift supervisor for thirteen, or, you know, his shift, secondary folks on his shift. If he goes to within, he's gonna go to the salary position. That is from a couple of grades increase. The problem is, he's gonna be putting in the, the same amount of hours or more hours, and the higher, higher younger guys are looking at that and not seeing as much of benefit because the problems with the pay in passing. It's, it's getting, the pay in passing is really close, and that middle management, it's, it's the same problem we had with fire department, the CHAS, that we fixed out a long time ago. It's exactly the same problem. We lay the numbers out, we look at it, they were, they were way too close. We had to give that bump and fix that, you know. We went through that to fire, and it was fixed, and we got it, we got it fixed to a point, it was set in the right direction. I think overall, the problem is the pay plan itself, really needs to be looked at, analyzed.
From a bigger point of view, not just, I just don't think you can shop in front of-
On one particular case, and if we give a two point five percent raise across the board, you're just gonna make that problem work?
Could, could, could I speak to the difference between the salary and hourly?
Please.
One of, one of the things I think, you know, but I don't use, I don't, but our young managers-
Can we get that on the record?
Yes, it's on the record.
He said it on the record.
Our young managers, especially in the utility division, where we have a lot of emergency calls, a lot of night calls in our weekend hours, our salary people are the first responders to keep the overtime thing. They don't call in those hourly people unless it's something they cannot handle themselves. They do all the inspections on all these pipelines, both city projects and private developer projects, those contractors work twelve, fourteen hours day, six, seven days a week. And these salaried employees, and my part, are putting in fifty to sixty hours a week because that's what their job requires. And so when you keep telling them, you're gonna make the same money because you're salaried, pretty soon, when I call at two o'clock in the morning, the phone hang up and ask me.
Why should you give them overtime on when you get paid for it and when you don't? And then again, you compound that by, uh, by the folks who get overtime, giving them a two and a half, and, and I, I'm the one making recommendations, so I strongly recommend that. Uh, but also, again, I know with the, uh, and, and the list is, uh, uh, the future of the city, although, like Wayne said, that, you know, the managers, particularly, a lot of your, your young managers, and, uh, the, uh, why should they move up to a salary versus an hourly, uh, and, and getting paid for overtime and getting less of an increase? That is how you should start.
I don't, I don't see how we fix the problem, and I'll go back to the problem. Let's say you gave a one percent increase across the board, forget two and a half or whatever. The overtime guy is still gonna make more money, because he's still doing overtime.
Yeah.
And the other guy is still not doing overtime at salary, and-
But, but it, but it's uniform.
But we're talking about, we still have a core problem though, Wayne, which is, which is your hourly guys, regardless of the amount of raise you give across the board, your hourly guy can potentially make more than your salary guy because he's putting in overtime, is that right?
And that's a fact of life.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
This is an issue.
If, if he's a step at an R or a grade that is out in an R, and you bring a, promote somebody to a supervisor who maybe is two grades higher, but he goes to an A, then that guy that's an R who's working for him is gonna make more than him, that's just a fact of life. But if you leave that, keep giving the guy-
And he's more, making more than him because he's literally making more because he's making overtime?
No, because he's literally making more.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you keep giving him two and a half-
Another twenty-two R and better than a twenty-four A.
You keep giving him a two or two and a half, and keep giving supervisor who was at A, the, the hourly guy gets further and further ahead of the salary guy. You know, and, and that's a fact, that's an end of it, because you're gonna have people who, because of longevity, who don't want to be a supervisor because they're gonna take a couple of days, are gonna make more than a supervisor, either new or with four, five, six, seven years, who's lower on the step scale even though he's higher on the grade scale.
Okay.
Each grade is five percent, each step is two and a half percent. So supervisor is two grades higher at an A than a salary at an A, supervisor can make five percent more. But if the salary person is out here and we have a Q or an R-
Yeah. Well, the only, here's the thing though, again, you can give everybody a uniform raise, two point five percent, that's great, we all have a warm fuzzy feeling, because everybody's just got raised. And when that warm and fuzzy feeling wears off, we've just created a situation where the exact problem we have now has been made worse, and now those, that twenty-two R, now that twenty-two R is moved to twenty-two S, and he's gonna be making even more money than, uh, than his supervisor than he was before.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right. But the issue with that is, you've got to look at it from a, we have got to give or look at a way, you, you can't hunt it. If you ask department some good pay study right now, look at all the problems of the pay study, you're exactly right. If you give a two and a half to everybody, you're gonna have, the only difference is, the number will only be a two and a half percent raise across the board, all those problems are gonna be there. It's, it's nobody's one fault, it's, it's, it's the resident community of the city and the executives that they have. When you haven't done a pay study in a long time, and if you do a pay study, it costs money, and then implement that way, so it is gonna cost money. So you're band-aiding the problem, and then kinda band-aid the problem over the last two years. And you can't do much about it other than band-aid it unless you're willing to look at doing something different.
I'm not saying maybe this is the same like a year, I'm saying this year, our people have suffered since two thousand, especially our younger people with payments, and that's salary and hourly. Some of us old folks don't have payments, I don't have one. But when I go in the store and I say four dollar a gallon of milk, and three dollars for a loaf of bread, I'm wondering how some of my people are putting food on the table in the past five years, they've got less than a percent increase, because you cannot calibrate into your budget. I'll shut up.
I guess what, what I'm hearing everybody say, tell me front row, Wendell, on the back row. Back to the kitchen, because this is what he said. What?
No, it's a troublemaker today.
Come on, what I'm hearing is that, what I'm hearing is that, given a two and a half percent step raise as a budget assumption, gives everybody a raise, cures nothing, and the way our pay system is established, how it works, is not gonna cure inequities, it's not gonna cure the person that's making more than their, the hourly person making more than their supervisor, it's just flat out a two and a half percent raise across the board, and go back to fight another day to figure out how to fix this. Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly right.
So then take the ninety paycheck of seven?
Exactly right.
I just, I just wanna be clear, because I keep hearing, we gotta do it this way, so we fix this, we gotta do it this way to fix this, and we're not fixing anything.
What I can tell you is, in my past experience, in a couple of instances, we've given over our pay studies over the past ten years, fifteen years, it's, it's, the pay study is expensive, it's expensive, and then implement it-
Let's do a one percent cost limit adjustment, and then add up to a day, let's put it in an information, or put it in as a budget item in this budget right here to pay for a pay. I mean, because let's face it, you had, you had-
There's your money, you won.
You had the six full-time positions-
What word of that between the next year and the next month?
Yeah.
In one year?
Six.
Pay study, uh, University of Georgia, Patrick Lee Hamlet.
That front row is gonna get all pretty crowded.
We, 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 uh, next call, it's a, probably a year, but we've got, and, and the initial fee was about thirty thousand, it's just kind of a, uh, a study fee, and of course, implementation. We look at all together, um, it could be about two and fifty to three hundred thousand, but then there's a piece where you have to add in the equity, as you mentioned there, to make up for, uh, the difference between the regular piece. I think of the cost study was most important, is that you have a plan, and that you don't have to implement it right away. Okay, I think it's how we communicate with the employees, if we're doing, is that you have a plan, and you break it up over the years to come, and you try to meet that problem over the years to come, because it might be doing all at once.
What's gonna cost two hundred and fifty thousand? You mean that's just gonna, they're gonna come back and say, we're gonna adjust these salaries, and they have to go up by two fifty?
Yeah, because they're not going down.
In other words, our government agency is gonna recommend that the government raise salaries?
The, uh, look, comparable positions in comparable cities, the recommendation, when we have it from University of Georgia, will take over a million dollars, absolutely will take over a million dollars. And that, maybe their recommendation, once you have that done-
Annual expenditures by the city.
What?
Annual expenditures by the city.
Will be at least a million dollars a year.
And our savings account has my, how much in it?
Well, it's a hundred grand over there.
And our savings account has how much in it?
Well, we've got some, but you're talking about the reserves.
General Fund Reserve Fund.
Uh, these here, we should end up at somewhere six to seven hundred thousand.
That's a hack, that's a hack there. One more comment, and I promise I'll shut up. One thing I'd ask this body to remember, look over just the last five years, at the growth that we've had, the number of customers we've increased, the miles of water and sewer pipe, the miles of gas pipe, the miles of growth that the police have, and we haven't had any people, we keep asking our people, do more, do more, do more, we're growing.
No, wait, no, wait, 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 some, some agencies haven't had people, the guy to your right has some, but-
Okay, we have, and, and we have added thousands of customers, and miles and miles of lines, and any sort of-
Uh, right, right, but we have had, we've, we've gone up forty employees, I think, to our sorry, so we've been up forty employees since two thousand, whatever.
The, in the last, since, I'll be, it would be eighty, forty, and, uh, ten, twelve, four.
So we've, we've added, we are adding, and I'm not saying that we don't need to add more staff, we are, we are currently adding. We're running at a pretty decent rate, ten percent in five years, pretty, pretty strong.
That isolated performance.
That's, that may be true.
Can I, can I, can I say something?
Please?
Um, I do wanna echo, um, some of the department heads, it's, uh, I think, uh, just to be frank, but, um, I think it's late in the game. I think that, um, some changes are around, so I think that, um, this is a discussion that probably should have gone a little bit, and I think, yeah, I don't think it'd be long, but I do, I do, I think, uh, I'm not a finance person, okay, so I'm not, I'm not gonna say that, okay, uh, in terms of what, what you're going down, but I, I do believe that at this point forward, um, we're just gonna, I don't know, I think that we need to start maybe about next year, right, and coming up with a plan, moving forward, maybe we might not be able to do two and a half percent next year, we might not be able to, but we can come up with a plan, and we're gonna start moving forward to something that's feasible, instead of coming back to budget retreat next year again, coming back to budget retreat next year again, and having this conversation again. We need to have this conversation, like, if this is the year, so, coming up with plans and start, start working towards that, give us something more.
Yeah, I told him. You know, it's a really hard, it's a really difficult, but as a budget assumption, none of the elected members of this board put that budget assumption down, and this board was really clear in a budget hearing, they made the front page of the paper, that we were not rubber sanding a two and a half. I'm not saying we're not going to, but we were, I mean, and I guess that's a good thing, that was one of the, that was the headlines. Um, and so if, if the employees felt that that was a done deal, I apologize.
I'll be honest, that was, that was objectionable.
Yeah, I, I apologize about that.
Yeah, I would believe that most, I got a lot of phone calls, employees asking, what do you want for it?
Right.
And I explained to them how I work, and it was a total story, that's, that's a little secret.
So you just have to be mindful- Yeah, nothing like being surprised.
And, and spending the money, I, I don't have any issue with us handing out three hundred thousand dollars to employees, I have a problem of me handing out three hundred thousand dollars to these employees in eleven years from now, in twelve years from now, in fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, and that's what this does. A step increase and change in the pay plan right now, it's never a-
And to piggyback on that, if you add the six full-time positions in, we're looking at, and Frank, I gotta say, your two hundred and seventy, I would think is probably a, a low estimate, because you haven't factored in some of the extra costs that come with having extra people around. Um, and so you're looking at five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollar increase in salaries, that's an over five percent increase in our single largest budget item, so, I mean, that's a, and, and we're still not, I mean, it's not like the revenues are raking in and the, and our bank accounts are filling up, because they're not.
A little bit, how large is the, uh, the increase I was giving you was for all employees in all departments, uh, the, uh, in the percent increase was this relating back to the general fund, take the total budget, fifty-two million, uh, then you're talking about one percent in the, what the cost to the city.
What's the total general fund, but, because that's the real question.
Thirteen, thirteen, seven.
It's about thirteen, a little.
That's, that's our discretionary-
Those, those increases, uh, that I gave you was for all departments, so I didn't break it down by just the number of people in, in the, uh, so like I said, that this increase with all the costs associated with additional, additional personnel would be about eighty-one percent increase in the expenditures, I'd say.
You know, I guess, that, the, the only part, well, not the only part, but part of it, part of the dialogue that really concerns me is I kept hearing that this is a, this fixes something, and that it fixes inequities and inequalities in it, because you can't give this without giving that, it's an inequality, and I understand that, but, and, and I don't know a problem with giving a raise, but I, now we can discuss, you know, A, you have a problem, and B, how much should it be, that's the two questions, uh, of the day, but I, you know, I think it ought to be completely clear that in giving a raise, it's because we think the employees need a raise, not because it's going to fix anything, because in essence, no, um, in essence, there're gonna be inequities within the system, and if we've got problems and if we have morale, or, you know, morale goes down because of inequities, this fix, does not fix that, straight up. And so the question for council is, do we want to give a raise because we think the employees deserve a raise? Because that's what it would be for, it would not be to fix inequity between hourly supervisor, any of that nature, it's not going to do that. With that, I mean, am I being accurate here?
Not just inequities for the future, but also from the past, in the last five years, uh, as far as salary increases given, uh, there was a 2% over the whole time, 2% for salary, 3% for hour, uh, in five years. So, uh, again, won't necessarily change anything, but it's make up somewhat of the cost of living issues.
I'm not counting about 350,000 bonuses. I know I don't want to count bonuses, but I, I still, I used to spend my bonus on, on items I wanted. So, I mean, I'm still a, still a council office, and it's not taxed. When we did the Christmas bonus, we first did it, you actually got 100. I only had a last bonus, it's different money.
It should be, it should be taxed.
You got 100. I think we got your 83.1 whatever, you got 100.
After all, you breathe bonuses as a net after that, an actual bonus.
Net after.
Was.
So I, I still feel the bonus is, is a better option, but especially if, if we're saying this is not fixing it anyway, 2.5 is not fixing it, but if it is an increase, even if it's.
But I think we're.
One thing, is it, one thing 2.5 does is, it does give you a little deep impression on the new hires. At least, new hires, if, if, and still, A, we'll move to the B.
True.
We hire a brand new person, not making the exact same things the guy who's been there for the last four years. That helps some, that definitely helps with morale because you hire a new guy in, you got a guy that's been there three and four years, he's making the same thing they want. But immediately, unadded income.
And that's why it proposes a step increase, because if you were hired four years ago and you hired tomorrow, you're making exactly the same thing.
That was one of the first things I said, rather than start this discussion as long as we're good. But.
Tell me somebody's writing that, with counsel, and, um, so to your pleasure, I can, uh, address it.
Would anybody else like to make a comment? Anybody from the audience would like to make a comment?
Well, I'm not going to, I'm for John.
He started a, a Z 2.5.
Any other discussion from council? I'll take that as a then. Okay, um, let's go back to item 12, which is where we were. It was a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-16, a resolution adopted in fiscal year 2015, budget assumptions for the city of Steaksboro. Do I have a motion?
I bet you need those officers, Wendell.
Sure.
Bet you need those officers, Wendell.
Well, you added three last year in FY14, and that was the first time you've added 13 years. One of the six fastest rural micro metropolitan areas in the country. You've also annexed some affected areas. And, uh, I wouldn't even get into the road model and the streets from longer, and all the, all the unit complexes and students. So, uh, yeah, I'm happy for that, and you need more. And fire school has a way to place it, but we're getting there, and we're thankful for that. It's just a problem that, that we need to address and it costs a lot of money to address it. And we're getting there, but it's taking days to address it.
But you need those officers, so you can get them, right?
Yes.
78 and a half right there? I'm here to talk.
As far as police staff.
Right.
Uh, at least that one I did back in 2013, February, that was in the forecouncil. Those were netting at 21. Now we did it in, uh, in 2014 in January with year 2013 numbers. They lowered it down to 14, but that was in consideration of the three that we got in FY14. So, uh, we, it lowered it by net of four, based on the ICP manpower need system.
So we need three officers for every thousand.
That's not correct. That's a whole way to do it. That old, that old model was two to 2.5 per thousand. Uh, that is not recommended. We do it based on the office service, area covered, the shift that you work. It's that hall presentation that we did, uh, and then when I re-did it, I, I presented you guys and we actually went down four officers, and they had four come to need of 21 to 17. But out of those 17, you added three. So the net need right now, before you pass this budget, is, uh, is 14. If you pass this budget today, the net need will be 10, uh, which is good. It's good, and that, and that costs a lot of money.
Let me ask this, since we haven't had anybody move for a motion. Would council look at perhaps, um, a less of a percentage increase combined with the bonus?
Sure.
Christmas bonus?
Um, what, what was the bonus structuralized this year?
It was a Christmas bonus and then we did a June bonus.
We did not. We did it again, and it was instructions from council, so we did do a half the bonus in Christmas. The other was a June if I felt, uh, comfortable. And again, since I'm on the final figures, I haven't felt comfortable in making the recommendation. When the final budget comes in, uh, you know, at the end of this month, I may do that. But at this point in time, I didn't feel comfortable with that. So second half bonus, I'll be direct, I'll be at this point.
Can I ask a question? Pretty quick. Um, I think everybody's true version, it comes down to two things. How much money do you make? How much money can you spend? Frank, I want to ask you a question, don't you think it's real hard for you to answer? If we do this, is, you know, our, our general fund, we have been trying to get our reserves up for the longest time. We have made no progress in the grand scheme of it. We have made some, but we have not made the strides we hoped to make. When we do this, and you just said, your estimate's 300,000, Bill says 600,000 plus. Let's just say it's 450, do you need a? How long before we, before we're going to have to have the conversation nobody up here wants to have?
Again, whether next year that recommendation for a step increase could come about, I think our budget is solid for next year. Uh, it was this year, each year, but as far as general fund, all of our funds basically meet the objectives that we've set, with exception of fleet, we've made some adjustments and recommendations with budget fleet. Next year, we will meet that objective, uh, as far as fleet. And the, the general fund, we've basically gone from, uh, from over a million dollar deficit to somewhere of 25 to 700,000 dollars.
I know, but I'm saying, I'm saying inflows and outflows. If we do this, this is, I mean, what Will I think is trying to get at is the same thing Wayne's trying to get at. Inflation is something nobody ever talks about. Cost of goods and ser, goods and services to feed your family is going up. I don't care what, what the government says the number is, it's more than 3%. They don't take, they don't take into account food costs, they don't take into account heating.
Right.
That, that's a bogus number that's put out. It's probably somewhere in the 5% to 10% range, if you really looked at everything, if you do it on a data basis. But my point is, we, if we do this, it is now compounding the net increase. Because it's not just, say, 2.5 this year, it's 2.5 plus, the next time we do this, it's 102%, 102.5 plus 2.5, and it's just compounded. And eventually, we're not going to have enough coming in to cover what's going out. And we can't hurt that, so we only got one, we only got one choice, huh?
We ran it for one, for several years, we're not running one now. The, uh, the recommended budgets for the general fund for this year, even with the 2.5% is the same as last year. So basically, we are becoming more efficient. We, we haven't raised the level of the, of the total general fund budget, still basically the same thing.
Right.
So each department's become more efficient. So they're combing this 2.5% through savings that they've been able to generate within each of those departments.
But you can't get so much, so much from one, you can't sweep so much just.
Absolutely true. And there's a couple of factors working in that, in that regard that hopefully we'll, eventually we'll see with some relief. One that, uh, we've self-generated through effort, you know, all the employees basically with helping with the growth of the city of Steaksboro. If you look at the increase in digest, it, this is a delay. It's a two-year delay from when a project starts. Uh, because again, it has to be on the, the tax rolls, as in January the 1st, you collect that November. So if it's January the 2nd, you don't collect until the following November. Uh, we've had, uh, growth, uh, in projects of 130, 140 million dollars. Uh, at, uh, 40% evaluation, that's another $50 million. This last 20 million times, uh, well, it's, it's, uh, actually, say 50 million. We, at the 6.358 mills, don't generate, I'll take my head machine and tell you, but it's not, generated another $300,000, $400,000 just from the growth we've had in the last three years. That's come into play, uh, but, uh.
I mean, that goes into the general fund really, but I mean, and, and guys, I hear what y'all are saying. Wayne, you and I have had a great conversation at budget retreat. It's not that we don't want to give. It's, we're burdened with the fact that if we give and we don't do it and do it to be good stewards of the money, eventually we're going to have to get revenue from somewhere else. And nobody up here wants to do that either. So we want to give, but we have to be careful where we get from. And, I mean, if my two cents is worth anything, I don't, I don't have a problem with the 2.5% rates. I don't. Because I do agree with Wayne and Wendell wholeheartedly. The guys, the guys in Seattle, who live across our city, it is fair. I mean, they've been stuck in limbo forever. But just make sure you understand, like Wayne and I talked about. And when it comes to crunch time, the next time, there won't be talk of just half-day furloughs. I mean, as long as we're, we're all on the same page, we're all the same, but we, we are the, uh, the department has, by its direction, and not going to make a recommendation to, to council, that's not going to be a balanced budget. We're not going to do that. Uh, and again, that's why I like, uh, example, why I haven't made the recommendation of the June, uh, of the June bonus increase, I will make sure it's there and in the bank before I would have made that recommendation. The same thing, uh, through self-generated savings and also by greater output for the existing labor force that we have, uh, we're self-funding the 2.5%. And next year, if we don't, then we won't make that recommendation. But one advantage that the city of Steaksboro budget has, uh, is that, uh, is our strength we have in our enterprise funds. And so we're most of the nest pouches of our size. Uh, a third to 40, 45% of their revenue are coming from property tax. In our situation, uh, you know, our property tax, just 3.7 million, uh, of a $52 million budget. So we have a very diverse and very strong, uh, revenue stream. And that's, uh, one of the reasons that since all of our enterprise funds, proprietary funds, uh, have their reserves, the, if you want, uh, if you want to, to meet that reserve, which is basically 17% as far as general fund, we've got excess in proprietary funds. I can have that transferred more. So every reserve is got the state recommended level, uh, every, you know, every, every fund has got the state recommended level of reserve, we can do that. Uh, but, uh, again, we're very conservative.
Way on the other end of the.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's way, what I was asking.
I know what I'm just saying, the.
I get what you're saying.
We have gone all the other end.
I need to, to, bring it back.
I disagree with too many, because I'm across the board, I said it.
You say we can't pay, you're not even sure we can pay the bonuses yet.
Well, I said until then in the bank, I won't make the recommendation. And right now, uh, again, as I said earlier, that's why. I stated those figures, uh, the, as far as the general fund, we're 13, 109, as far as 95.54% of revenue, as far as the general fund, and we spent 91.96. So at this point in time, uh, yes, but again, I want to see another month. Uh, if you look at, uh, expenses versus revenue, right now, I've got a surplus in the general fund, 531,375 dollars.
I, I guess I don't understand then, I mean, I love you, Frank. If you can't tell me we got enough money right now to pay a bonus, how in the heck do we have enough for a $300,000 increase in salary?
Didn't say that, it's been the flashes from the very beginning. The money is divided right now, and I want to see another month before I make the recommendation.
And I guess I, I want to see more months before I recommend $300,000 of forever salary increase. And I know Wayne says he doesn't want it. We don't have a mechanism to take Wayne out of the 2.5%. We don't have a mechanism to take a Wendell out. If it's across the board, it's across the board.
Take my mouth. I can't record, take it out.
But, I, I'm, that's, yeah.
Take it out.
But, and they've had it, they've asked for that, but we don't have, we don't have a recommendation. If there's another tier you want to do, that says 2.5 to a certain number, and then we go from there, I'm fine with it. I'm not, I'm not mad at, I'm not mad at these two guys, but they've said in front of us, we don't want the raise.
It's got a cost, you didn't hear right, I don't want.
Jeff.
I think they're saying, they regretted that the employees be taking care of the day.
But we, but we've already said that 2.5, no one up here disagrees with 2.5 from a certain point. My recommendation then got into a muddleson on a 1% group. But then there's one more group, I guess, there are three groups.
Here's my point, we're talking about putting $500,000 in the bank this year for the first time in two or three years. And we're going to talk, and we're talking about spending $600,000 more next year.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying.
When you add six employees and a 2.5% raise for everybody across the board, that's about $600,000.
Every department has, has cut for those employees. You only have so much money to go on, and we all sit around and we plan for this stuff. We don't, we don't, this is off the tree. Everybody has come to the table and has said, police department, the guard department, private funds are totally different, let's just talk about police. Police is general fund.
Right.
Police is, is globally understood, according to 80,000 calls a year, 20, almost $30,000 residents, 30,000 residents of the city, almost $21,000 students, not to mention, 5,000 students, not to mention all the, so, all that stuff goes into that manpower formula. Everybody has come to the table and said, okay, we understand that we need to try to get group more officers over the next five years, and we can afford to do it. So how do you do that? Everybody's got to cut a little bit to make that happen. PD can cut their operational budget, brand life.
But this is based on our current revenue, whatever the revenue's dip, we don't have anything in the bank.
What I'm saying to you.
And that's exactly what Travis said. The next dip we have, it's not going to be furloughs, it's just going to be people losing their job.
You've got finance director, and you've got a finance team, and you've got a city manager that's looked at that, and you've got these figures that you can forecast over time.
You've got a balanced budget presented to you, 400,000 to 2.5% raise for this year. If next year, if the growth and the revenue stream doesn't increase or goes south, then either we don't get a raise or we have to lay off employees, or we have to take furlough notes. But to penalize our workers, the people that make this place safe and livable for our residents, because maybe next year, we won't have the revenue to do it.
because maybe next year, we won't have the revenue to do it again, is not right.
But we're not, we're not taking the money.
If you're submitting a balanced budget, it would be different.
And if you recall, from the numbers I remember seeing before Mr. Frank came in here, we were $600,000 in the red, and our general fund was our balance.
And also, $700,000 in the red in the health fund. All those in the red.
Everything else has come up now. And I agree, it's come up very small. And is, is that what you think?
Well, no, that's not totally true. Let me give you one example.
But let's stay on payroll.
But I am, but this, this, this was a light story. Uh, we addressed issues, uh, Jeff.
What did Jeff?
Uh, health fund was over $700,000 in the red. What is the balance, I'm just sending you the one, where is the balance of the health fund right now in the bank?
It's over $700,000.
Just in that one fund. We've spent 1.4 billion. That's, we're not even talking about general fund. Every fund has been that way.
But that was also because we had, we had foresight of bringing in the health clinic and the other things that we've done.
And we charged, and we charged our people more money.
We have a plan to get in here. Every time I had meetings today, it was good. Because basically, what we, what we thought, not with any help, sound the plan. And all I think anybody else who wants to know is what's our plan? We don't want to make a decision today that's going to impact the next 10 years and not know what's going to happen.
It's the same plan we've had for the last four years. It worked every, every year. And we've, and we've, we've strengthened every year, uh, the city's finances, each and every year. And we're going to continue to do that. Uh, so, uh, as far as, uh, the financial strength of the city of Statesboro, I would say a low modest policies in the United States, uh, financially, we're in the top 10 percent.
I want, I want to have a clarification so everybody in the audience understands. Let's just say for argument's sake, this two and a half percent raise was 300,000. Because we do have a flooding number out there right now. Got a flooding number.
I got a second.
So let's just say it's, it's, it's 300,000. All right, next year, does that mean that the effective raise would be 600,000? And the following year, it would be 900? Or is it just 300 above today? Next year, the following year, if the raise stayed in place, it'd be 300? If it stayed in place, it'd be 300? You see what I'm saying? It's not a $300,000 raise every year.
It'll go 300, 330, 360.
Every year based on this year.
It is calculated, boy, you've said, not counting new cars. The two and a half percent is 275,000. That's the exact number. If everyone is, is, is full employment for four years, we have, if we have, uh, openings, if we have vacancies, you know, and staff is less than that, this is the maximum for a year, is 275.
And that's retirement, that's all contribution. That's matching that, that social security, that's everything. Retirement, that's everything. That's medical, that's everything. It's what it costs, that's what it costs to, for that raise to be implemented.
No, it's 275,000, it's just to pay.
Liberal pay, okay. So it's effectively more because you got to pay matching social security, so. Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to be clear.
Pays on salaries?
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear with the effective, what the, uh, what the, the actual effect of raising it that amount would truly be. That's all, not, I just want to be clear.
Jeff, I got a question. Is there any way to segment the raises? I mean, obviously, the supervisor will want to give back to the, uh, the staff under it. Is that, that's not possible, is it? Is it?
It's, it's possible. I mean, it's possible. Have to sign off that they're going to do it or something like that. It is possible. I say, let those, let those folks that want to do that, we'll, we'll, we heard that. We sign off on it. I'll sign off on it. I don't have a problem doing that. I mean, I feel that passion about our folks.
I know you do, and, and I commend you.
I would love to do it. I would do it. It's not a problem. I'm happy, honored to do it.
Hey, John, I think that one, that's it. That's, yeah. Well, he's got a, he has to call in and write everything down.
There's a report.
I'll entertain a motion with counsel.
We have to shift some budget to the state by the end of March.
We're going, we're going some other budget.
But we do need to, uh, to send some budget to the state to meet that obligation. So it's certainly, I need to, uh, to get counsel to.
But the only issue we're, we're currently on is the budget is something that's paid and, you know, and, but I love it. And what we're all happy with, as far as payroll for this year, I think we would also agree if we want to do a study for two reasons. One, we want to do the study so that our staff realize that we are, you know, you know, continuing to look at it and see where we are. They're going to tell you what I'm paying them for. That's what I'm saying. Karl Marx Institute is going to do that. It's going to give you three numbers, high, low, and medium, and you're going to go in and tweak them all, and they're going to say we're underpaid, no doubt. So when we do.
Also, Karl Marx.
It's the Karl Marx Institute. That's what they are. It's, it's, if they're going to tell you that's what I'm saying. It's, it's going to tell you that.
I was just going, I was just going.
I mean, they already told us that 200,000.
We currently have, we currently, we currently have an $11 budget. There's no way it's not going to go up 14 and a half, 15, 16.
It's going to go up a million dollars?
It's going to go up a million, a million plus. And that's what I was going to say. And then we're going to get that number, and then we're going to have to go, what do you want? High, medium, or low? And we're going to be jerks and pick a low. Because we're like, we can't afford that. Um, if we, if we implement that plan. But, I mean, if that's something that we need to do, I, you know, I, I do understand there's a.
Well, what I.
The issue.
But Jeff, I mean, oh.
That's what we're resolved.
You know, when telling about you going to the valley, I mean, we had a study, Frank, at the time, I think, we discussed it. This was the city, man, what was his name, Frank? They was frankly, uh, Terry should have made it more than Joe Moore at the time.
Yeah.
Remember that, you? And Frank called us, but, you know, Colvin's Institute, I think they charged us $24,000. I would tell them that. The man with the AICP, like, should be making more than that. $24,000, I was going, I'm great. And, I mean, this is how they jump. I mean, we should have, we need to pay these folk here now, before we go get the study. They called me, they charged 30,000. You tell them, they ain't got to get paid enough. Why can't you see it?
I think that the way this study looks at it, and what we did learn from this study was, sure, the numbers were going, but the study shows you the distance between employees. If the guy is driving a sanitation vehicle, and the guy's in charge of fixing the sanitation vehicle, where are those two guys? Sergeant should be making this, and he's managing these guys, and these are these guys, and they're going to make that.
That's, that's the.
That's what it showed. And according to the, the Wendell and stuff, it's our current plan, we've muddled that too much.
So let, let, let's forget it, between you and I and the rest of us up here. And the guy, we not going to be out in the fight prior to 3 o'clock in the morning, 2:00. I think that's, we not going to pick up that trash out there. Now, we can make all the decisions that we want up in the thing, but I mean, I know this bench, but the guys that we need to pay for the ones, that they're going to do that work. We need to settle that too. I mean, it just, this summer, up in, sort of in the old, the chair. It's been a while since these folk had a raise. And I think it's time for them to have a raise. And we talk, we talk about what's going to come to him, we're not going to have any action this year. What we doing now is putting a cart here, a horse. Let's deal with what we got today, pay the people, and then we're going to let the nation, like you said, we're there, 300,000 this year, we're 300,000 this year, no problem. We're not going to go down there. If you go down there, we got a problem. But let's deal with when that problem come. Right now, the problem is these fellows need a raise. Always need a raise, probably they protect us at night. We home, we go to the club, we jump all night long. But we don't, we not going to, we not going to, we not going to fight for crime. We got, with our life on the line. Actually, for those, they need a raise. Not a phone for a raise.
I, I, I'm picturing that. I, I, I do, I, I can picture it, and my arms and legs going, that's all I know.
Y'all can tell I'm a Gary, that's what he does.
I, I can picture it.
That's what I do. I tell them, yeah, that's what I do. He's like, I want protection in property, protection.
Well, I, I will say this, what I've heard counsel say is, I think counsel in general thinks that our employees need a raise. Would y'all agree with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, in, in some way, shape, or form. I think the employees have heard that if counsel agrees to two and a half percent and revenues go south, this room is going to be less full.
Or it could be more full.
Or it could be more.
I'm feeling on your point here.
So I think that everybody hear that. And I think the next time somebody comes up and says, I need to give somebody a raise so that it's more equitable, or we need to move them to be more equitable with the next person, you're probably not going to get a lot of good response if you get this raise. Does that make sense?
We're going to get you.
Yeah. Because we've all agreed that this is not going to, you know, result in equity. It's not going to reduce inequity. So that, you know, that reason for coming up all the time and moving people around to make it equitable, there may not be room to do that with this raise. Is that, do y'all?
But the guy that, the guy that's over almost half of our staff says this two and a half doesn't fix this.
That's what I know.
If this is not a fix, why are we spending $300,000 for a non-fix?
Because the employees deserve.
Because Gary says they need a raise.
I, I'm not denying that any employee deserves the money. If you want the money, if you want to do it my way, give, give the money today, and that's one check.
But it doesn't have more zero power. It's not a work-related county. I, I know. Now, on a budget, a plan, their weekly budget on what they're going to spend. Fact of life is, when, when you give most of our employees a budget once or twice a year, that money goes to buy a nice and happy house. Because they're not going to put it in there and fork it out in so much a week for six months. And there is not.
We can have it where they are paid, huh? On a pay, on a, on a, but, but.
But it is not a.
But you're saying, Wayne, we're not fixing it. Even when Wendell's admitting there's two and a half that's not fixing, so what? How can you spend grand and grand to not fix them?
The two and a half is not fixed. We need to start talking about the fix, come on. We need to take care of our people that are taking care of our citizens today.
The fix is spend more money. That's all the fixes. We go to Colvin's, and they're going to tell us, spend more money to pay certain people more money. That's the fix. But we don't have the revenue to spend the money. That's the problem.
If we're not bringing in the revenue, we can't pay for it.
Exactly.
But this is balanced budget. We have busted our butts for five years to get, we're bringing in the revenue for this year. Our employees have gone above and beyond.
There's no denying.
And, and I don't think there's a place that we can keep talking about. When you get different levels of place, though, but if you get one like, like the city needs, the last one we did was in 2006, and it was about $600,000 something thousand. And if you do one today, you're going to see there's so much problems with different places in the city, actually, specifically, police and fire. And we fixed some of that fire. It's going to cost a lot more money than $200,000 to bring, bring this in. To fix, to fix that problem.
That's what I'm saying. Wendell, we're going to spend 300 a day. We're going to get the study, and then we're going to have the $600,000 fix in front of us. And we're going to look at you and go, we can't pay for it. And I guess that's what, we can't.
Arguably, giving everybody a raise could make it that fix even more expensive.
It's, it, this raise makes that fix further than the fix.
If you figure the fix in 2006, 400, 600, bring it. Imagine what it would be.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean count the next two years of employee raises and employees.
But you sit, what, you show, you show.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-16, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2015 budget assumptions for the city of Statesboro.
Do I have a second?
I'm the biggest one against it. Y'all, Wayne, I got a second.
Second. I hate to ask this, do I have discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And that is your government. No, we're going to Sally Court.
We're going on.
Either somebody says, who's Sally Court? Okay, um, item 13, consideration of motion to approve resolution 2014-17, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2015 authorized personnel for the city of Statesboro, Georgia.
Jerry, the, uh, councilman, Frank, it has the, uh, list of, uh, personnel. And, uh, we can, and wait now to get, uh, any questions. But, uh, the, uh, the primary increase is, again, is the place in fire because we're, we're far down. So the increases, um, in the, in, uh, PD goes from 78.5 to 83.5. There's, uh, you understand, Wendell's, they have, they have fire. And on fire, uh, it goes from 47.5 to 50. So, uh, three increase in fire, uh, four increase in PD, and the recommendation of a one, uh, part-time to full-time, and accounting, and, uh, one additional in GIS. Is that all the increases, I think it is. Uh, like I said, it's in the back, and you can compare the 13, 14, 15 budget for his personnel. But, uh, the. So we're going to add 27 people in the next two years. Is that what I'm reading? Uh, I'm not sure.
280 on total and all, is that total people in all funds? 282, 13, and 309 and 15?
Uh, 282.
His current employees.
And, uh, that's part of, uh.
That was fiscal year.
Resident.
Yeah, it's 82.
297.
Is what I have this year.
So we ended, we ended this year with 297?
And, uh, so.
Well, and next year with.
309.
12 additional.
And, uh, yeah. And some of those are already approved, but we list them, like the, uh, the place in fire increase, that's included in here, but that's already been approved by counsel. But that's part of, but if you run down the, the, uh, the sheet, uh, each department, like I said, this ticket meant to look at the sum of each department. I can, and then, of course, if you want to, but, uh, and, uh, of course, uh, and the administrative's the same, and manager's office the same, parts office the same. Finance, one part-time to full-time, uh, not, not additional legal, uh, no additional HR, no additional in municipal court, no additional in engineering, uh, in PD, uh, the increase is from, I'm not understanding, let's see. It was four, it's four, it's mispronounced. It said that increase in PD of only four, uh, and not in, uh, public works. Uh, administration streets, the same, parks the same, planning the same. In fire, increase of three, uh, like I said, already approved, but, and we showed authorized personnel and a, uh, a, uh, one additional person in GIS. And one is showing actually, uh, excuse me, in there, showing reduction in GIS from what's short, uh, moving to, uh, HR, and we'll pick it up. So here we lose one, but this is a transfer, no additional in, uh, water treatment, same number, same number in customer service, same number in natural gas, same number in solar waste correction, same number in solar waste disposal, same number in fleet, showing an increase in two. That's one transfer. So it's only one addition in GIS. That's the total increase to the seat. Like I said, the place in fire are already been approved, but we showed all the new levels for next year.
All right, is there any, um, the way this is listed, are there any employees that between, I guess, today and this adopting, that would get a step increase? Doesn't have anything to do with predispositional assumption? Like, we already talked about someone going that's about to become, about to get two steps. Because I think that's what happened last time in the car mark study. And so I wanna make sure we kind of fix it. Because I mean, what could happen is Cindy's gonna get a phone call because we did everyone a step, and there may be Darren was already, we already approved Darren to get another step. So now Darren gets two steps. And then someone else will do it. So is that, is there anything like that in the works right now? Well-
Only we've had, um, there might be three promotions coming up between now and the end of the year.
Any what now?
The promotions going in.
Is there any promotions going in that we need to understand? Is there anything?
The only thing that could occur there is for, by the way, council would be if I had an operator who was uncertified at this point, and he got his two and a half-
Training is training.
And then when he got his certification, he would get those two steps back on the certification. That's the only thing.
And that's the worst.
That's the only thing that I can think of is, uh, promotions.
Because some people, remember, we kind of fix them because we wanted to move them to make sure we fix this. I don't wanna make sure, I don't make them a good place.
I don't have any of that.
Yeah, I think most of it we brought in.
The only thing I did have, and you may recall this or not, but I, you know, all you guys on the, when I was in discussion with Cindy and Jeff, was our APO for advanced police officer program. Remember, it used to be after 18 months, they would get a, they would get a two and a half instead. But for some reason, and nobody, we can't track it down, where it stopped. When the annual freeze is moved to effect in the city some years ago, those APOs got stuck in that freeze and it shouldn't have. Our resources extensively were just, and we were fixing that at this point.
But you didn't, you didn't back it up. It was just going forward. That's where you were going to play.
Not back. And that's in-
Two years, 27 people, one, one million. We're adding 27 people over the course of two?
I'm telling you.
282 to 309, that is 27.
The, uh, from, uh, we hit four last year.
As I said, yeah, 2013 last year, the next.
You got to think about it. That is also a fire problem, which is the bulk of that, that's your fire problem.
Please, sir. And let me make, just to point out, and we have talks retiring. In some cases, that actually generates a savings because again, you have a, have an individual spending with the city at a technical level for a certain length of time. So he's at a high level. He retires, person replaces him as a role level. So actually, the turnover is generating less increases than more increases.
I do have a question. Frank, if you look at the bottom of authorized personnel, you've got all of those footnotes, 1 through 28.
I'm sorry, what now?
The footnotes at the bottom, 1 through 28.
Yes.
Have, has that been factored into the budget?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
It has. I mean, so who we know that we, we already assuming in the budget, who's gonna get a one-step increase for the certification?
Only get certification.
Right. But I mean, you gotta have a sense of who is gonna be getting-
Each department is already factored that in there.
Okay.
And in most cases, it's more compensated by the amount of time that we've brought under staff.
Now, I just wanna make sure that that's in the budget. So this 1 through 28, anybody that hits that, you know who's coming, they're gonna hit it. It's in your, it's in your budget, salary budget for next year.
That is correct.
Okay.
And Mayor, the APO department I was talking about, specifically, there's 21, there's 21 current APOs in the department that got overlooked. For the APO payment, when the papers wouldn't go back, that shouldn't have. We're fixing that as of July 1, and we changed the program. It's a mirror, a newer program, it's 24 months that got to have certain levels of training now in order to get that, some other things that can be in the program. And all that's in there. Fixing that is in there. And anybody that's helpful from a due APO department, they meet those requirements within that 24-month period. Uh, there's two from FY15. If they meet the eligibility requirements with training, they have to get, there's only two in police department that will impact FY15 in that quarter as well. If they, if they did it, it's in the money that's claimed in there. But it's up to them to obtain that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had not left those 28 potential increases in pay out of what's being figured.
One last comment on that. And give all, I mean, certainly to the, 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 what we're doing is with the budget process, which has been very tense for the last four months, every line, uh, and every budget that we've looked at and all that taken into consideration. And that's why, basically, the costs of operating the city is, uh, is actually decreased slightly. The only increase is because of the additional personnel. If you take that out of the budget each and every year, you're seeing a decrease in costs of operating city. That's because of the efficiency that, uh, that they've been able to generate. It has been reflected into the budget somewhere. We're very conscious about how we put the budget together. So you can go back and review the last three, four years of the budget, and you can see that pattern.
Okay. All right. Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-17?
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, then item 14, consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-20, a resolution to adopt fiscal year 2015 budget reach by the City of Statesboro. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
It should be approved as well.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, then the item 15A, consideration of a motion to authorize staff enter to contract negotiation of Parker Engineering to provide planning designs associated with the construction and development. Proposed road improvement, Spade Avenue. Uh, I'm gonna defer here to our city engineer, Robert Chetar, to discuss that idea.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this project is part of our capital improvement program. This is improvements to Savannah Avenue, which this particular section we're improving goes from East Main to Gentilly Road. The improvements would include some level of milling, resurfacing, restriping, potentially with bike lanes, for example. Improvement to the sidewalks, traffic calming. Uh, you know, we wanna implement that on that street, especially on that section. And then improvements to the traffic signal in the intersection of Zeta Hour and Savannah. So pretty substantial. So, um, what you have, item 15A, is the selection of a consultant to help with those general improvements. We went through an RFQ process April 25 of 2014. We issued a statement of qualifications. Four consultants, uh, gave back responses, and those were turned over to a rating committee of those four, and they were all, they were all very good. Uh, but it was unanimous and unanimous to recommend Parker Engineering to council to do the professional services that we've spoken of. Uh, under 15A, you're gonna see 15B would be, uh, what's not included in my budget, or my budget for those improvements that I just talked about, would be the topographic survey that we need before we even start, 15A. And the utilities need to be completed. The improvements or upgrades to those utilities, which in this case is gonna be water. All that work needs to be done, the design, the construction, and of course, topography and the survey prior to both of those. So you're, you're gonna, that's why there's an item B on there. So we've done them separately. Parker Engineering, recommendation for those improvements that I listed for 15A.
Council, do I have any questions? Do you want to say anything, Mayor? Okay. Do I have it from 15A, consideration of a motion to authorize staff enter to contract negotiation for Parker Engineering to provide planning design services associated with development, construction documents, and bed package for the proposed road improvements to Spade Avenue, please mainstreaming to the road.
A motion of what you just said.
Okay, do I have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, we'd like to state, if you could, as a discussion, that this is the entering negotiation. So once we get a true scope of services, I'll be back in front of you getting the actual contract approved.
And the motion will be shorter.
Yes.
Just a little FYI on that one.
Starting low, he's gonna hit you up.
All right, I have a second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 15B. Uh, I think Robert just already introduced 15B. Do you need any further introduction on that?
Uh, no, we can answer any questions if you have-
Got a ballpark with us in Coslink?
The engineer, we had a concept plan done, and it's part of our long-range master planning. The whole reason I'm asking, we're heading into an engineering agreement with HGB is because they've already done all that work several years ago. We had this in our CIP, we had thought about. Robert asked us to move it up to, so it can kick back on the engineering of the meets and bounds in the survey work. And one thing we will do is we don't have to go through the RFQ process. We will speculate that the survey work has to be done by local surveyor, not by HDB surveyor. The budget estimate on this is 80 million dollars. The concept, I hope you're familiar with Savannah Avenue. It's asphalt over concrete, and in a lot of places, and that's over logs. You have a layer of logs laying east to west, dirt, logs laying north to south, dirt. So if you go in and replace things where they are, would be several million dollars. So what we've come up with is the same concept we've used on South Main, where we'll run a new water main down east side of Savannah Avenue and replace the existing sidewalk and add new sidewalk where the sidewalk doesn't exist now. And the budget estimate for the whole project is $880,000. I'm thinking that engineering, that we can hold that down to about 4%, 332 to 40,000 dollars max. The other reasons for asking employees to do this is the workload that we've got right now. I said we don't have time to spend 90 days with that RFQ. I would ask you to consider it.
What you're saying, 30 to 40,000 dollars without an RFQ, is what you're saying?
Yes, and again, all this would do would authorize Mr. Parker and myself, set out with HGB, negotiate an engineering contract, and that would then come back to this council for approval.
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 16, I just have to say there. Is anybody coming to speak on this item? I'm just disappointed. I was, I was actually, this was like the highlight of the meeting for me. And Darren was, we were in a rock and roll a little bit, and they opted out, did they not?
They're not seeing it here.
Okay, so item 16 is consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a vacuum excavator to Ditch, which, Georgia, having offered a little bit, in the amount of 50,000, 300,000.
This is always a review of a loan conducted about a month ago. I want to be very clear that we're very exacting our processes and requirements that we require. An addendum process is available, all, that all clearly conveyed. Yet again, special occasions, we're not met. Although this time a minor. If you're fully up, maybe I could repeat it. But I think natural gas needs this, the existing is, is in bad shape, so they need this carry on. This, uh, this vacuum excavator excavates, cleans out around various construction repairs for natural gas department. Again, we recommend the ditch which Georgia for 2014, expect early model of 54, 34, 78. We have a right of way technicalities. That's what we're asking you to approve. And approve the lowest price to get to Georgia.
So am I to understand that you were very specific in what you asked for, and you didn't?
We are.
And they did, they didn't come back, even after much education and encouragement?
Steve will vouch. I'm usually the thorn in the process. That's part of my job. Everything you can follow. We are very clear. I think Jason, the public worker, will admit, he's been out his machinery, which is much more complicated than this item. We have pre-bids, we have addendum processes. You know, I'm not real happy about the result we got, but I think we got a good price. The minor things that we're recommending is minimal, such as additional strobe light and some old age and old light. But just understand we're gonna check on this. If they don't meet the spec, the addendum process is bringing our attention, we're being accepted or denied change, issue of then. So it's not a smoking area in the middle of here. They're clear, it's least than you expect, yes or no? But we don't feel like the ones they missed on this one, in effect, is nothing such as force power or why not say we recommend it.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry we didn't get to play. All right, number 17.
I already said it through a three roof break.
Okay, that was close. All right, item 17, consideration of a motion set today for a work session to discuss a change to chapter six alcohol in the city of sexual ordinances. Do we wanna try to set today, or we can set another day? And I think that Councilman Brett said that he would like to invite folks that are the sports in town.
Sure.
And so we need to have time to do that. So what do you think would be a good day to make sure the mayor included?
July, it's just a-
The license holders should be here, first meeting in August.
Still in August? First meeting in August?
I'm sure they're there.
Okay.
I said that would be-
This?
With it?
Except for the, whatever, the first meeting in August is just after that.
Unless August dies. Frank, help us make life at the one table.
substantially less than 21 to 25, please.
Yeah, so you don't want much running.
Yeah.
If need be, that'll stand by.
Okay, do I have a motion to have a work session regarding alcohol ordinance after the city council meeting on August 15?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Do we wanna go back and hit item eight that was stated?
Nearly hours ago, you made that point.
When you made that point.
What are the prices now?
What are the prices now? It's okay to have.
President's citizen?
It's 100.
Max on feet of toe and is, and storage, what is it, Wendell?
So you got 135? 125. The city does a good job of that.
You're good.
It's the same as it was last year. What changed year before that is we get adjusted.
Okay, what we're talking about is consideration of a motion to approve resolution.
These are the new fees or the existing fees?
2014, yeah.
They haven't changed.
We're not changing fees?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, may I listen?
Well, they have, like, yeah, I was just wondering what these existing fees are. Which is just like the Avery Saturday, we just have to do this once a year? Oh, okay. Let's go through.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, well, I'm asking for asking.
Sure.
So 85 bucks plus 15. They're saving on charge of the extra 15, so, um, so it's 100 bucks worth of.
This, we look at it kind of like in original areas, it's complicated of other municipalities, I'd say.
Maybe you throw it for a second. There's no trouble in the city, you should take one of them.
Community, storage, 324 hour. I thought it used to be 324 hour starting at 25 hours. The first days, so you pay, when you get your cards out, you pay 100 plus 25 dollars.
You're right, after the 25 hours, sure.
You're right, after the 24 hours, you're all set.
All right, so, we need to, it's not real clear. It says only 25 dollars per 24 hour, period.
I think it's, I think it's more clear in the ordinance itself.
That's really real clear, because.
So, those are 100 bucks.
Because now, now, now the window's getting more staff, we just paid them 200%. I was about to ask you for some stuff, so. He's going to earn that money, and one of the things is, we're going to research this. Because I think, I think a college kid's going to hit the 25 bucks on the night they get there. Whereas a thousand dollar fine for the business is mine, I'm understanding. And it's a violation of your ordinance.
So, 100 dollars should include their state's average?
Yeah. There's a, you know, that we talked about, there's a lot many won't look at with our.
Is that the way the ordinance is?
I have to look. I would think, you get towed, you get a hundred, you get caught for 100 dollars, and it's still there in another 24 hours.
Yes, no.
You don't get 125 in the game.
I'm.
Whether the tow's on, you see.
At 2:45 in the morning, that guy's got 35, and he's 350 pounds.
Probably happened is you get towed at 11, and then, you know, 1 o'clock in the morning, you go pick it up, oop, there's another day, because it's Wednesday.
Should be a 24 hour from the time I.
Well, we'll look into it. I just want to make sure. But he pulled.
Somebody needs to call 601.
Boston Bridge.
Okay.
You got a motion to bring?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Discussion, discussion.
Discussions, they were. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We moved, then to item 18, other business from city council presentation by the engineering department to provide update on an ongoing drainage issue.
Thanks, Mayor. I believe it was the first meeting in May, council, the council asked us to come back at the second meeting in June with a better description of what we're, what we looked at in the Fox Lake and Merle Crossing subdivisions as far as drainage, and then that tied into some school questions also. So, Wayne's still here and can, can do the part on sanitary sewer, if you want, if you all have any questions. But I've asked David Hendricks to just give you very briefly what we've run into, and what the issue is with drainage, and what we recommend, and I'll let him take it, take it from there. It's pretty brief, and it's pretty simple, all.
David Hendricks is the city engineer. As Robert said, I would ask for an update on this drainage issue between Fox Lake and Merle Crossing. Just to show you, this is the area, this is Highway 84 in town, looking at, Fox Lake is here, Merle Crossing is here, at least part of the area. This is the area that's affected, it's mostly Fox Lake, down that left side, you go in, and then few houses and Merle Crossing. This was the original plant, and Maxwell already developed, the Merle Crossing, the Fox Lake is down this area. Originally, there's supposed to be a ditch and a private easy down this way, between Fox Lake and Merle Crossing. The city at the time, it was, and the office looks in plain, said that we could not accept this scene, it's just some backyards, just possibly a back there. A lot of law did we get on that day of 19, and maybe some other reasons to be able to actually access some pieces. So, keep this situation in mind. Here's what the situation is, the orange area is represented, red, a ditch, where that private easy was supposed to be. These gray lines going across there represents fences that were sort of across these. Those fences are covered by the edge of the green, edge of the setting, and across the ditch building, that off the ditch building, the west end. So now, the rain is coming off, some of this parking lot, and then just all of the ground here, is running to this first fence here. You can see it when you're out there, it's a slight hitch right here. It's this fence, finds the path to these residences, which is Fox Lake back yards, and during heavy storms, it's a, here's a way, Fox Lake eventually crossed. He's down the Merle Crossing, and there's some fences, there's Merle Crossing, there's a ditch. So, obvious solution there is, just need to remove, provision to put that in place. That's what we recommend.
David, this is part of, part of the reason why Fox Lake is going to do some, we land there, protect the paint.
Right.
Maybe not be the whole thing, I mean, there are.
Exactly. So, again, obvious solution is, remove those fences, get out of these areas, reestablish the ditch, and don't put fences back. What we've done, try to mitigate this, and we feel like it's a property issue, but we don't want our citizens having quarrels with each other. So, Robert and I went to a Fox Lake homeowner's meeting, she heard there was so much trouble. We sent letters to the homeowners in Merle Crossing, and the fences were obstructed earlier. Didn't really get any results out of that. We've attended Merle Crossing HOA meetings, most important, we've been able to do. We talked about some solutions, looked at different things, we even offered Ag as a property manager, and we, contractors that came up with, make sure it works, being done the way it needs to be at the moment, and we take advantage of it. HOA ultimately, that meeting pointed to subcommittee, to look at the issue, go further. Moving on, we. We had a meeting with the subcommittee, at the time I did, they came up with an alternative solution, which I've decided here, they, we put it there, so we'll get somewhere. We looked at that alternative solution, which I'll show you in a minute. We made sure we thought it would work, and ran it back by Max Arapin and such, just to make sure they thought it worked, they were original designers, so they modeled it. And when they confirmed it would, we developed a call system, provided to the homeowners association, and then being offered to work with the government to build it. That's now, hasn't been done to read. That second solution was, still removes some fences along that first stream at Merle Crossing, lots of people picking out, so that, salt storm drain pipe, two existing drainage structures, it wore on out to the street without letting cross other yards in Merle Crossing. And, to look for, they showed us, so it was that goes, and then the homeowners are, issue is, connecting these project, which is the easiest way. This was that alternative solution, and this is the, asking for.
What's about the color of that?
We're watching for people picking out, being out of the distance, three steps that ditch, hard seed right here, really hot, they're going to solve, which means two existing drainage structures that are placing out, so they can lay the water back out to the streets. So, in the process, we take care of that thing.
That won't be, that won't be under a house?
It won't be under a house, it runs right along the property line right now.
It doesn't?
Yeah. Right now, this lot, he was vacant, this guy's actually on his stuff, he's okay with these recommendations, but. So, that's the solution. In the end, our recommendation is that homeowners should work together, and, with the resolution there evaluated, make sure work, and, we've helped with much, people like Martin, city crews, shouldn't really get any, suppresses working in backyards, a lot of it is too great. Man, I urge you to afford, too great, as you know from us requesting, so it's, compared to people who have our lives today now, just working backyard, really, purpose, and. That's the update, doesn't really get too great, so which. But the solution is, was designed in the beginning, was called, was, shouldn't have been.
Robert, the owners of the fences are great, who are the fences?
That's real take, and that's the only hope they hold up. They don't seem to do every area is, different. It's not a reason, there's a reason, because it's not even bars, you're not using it in the media for a warrant.
And these types of drainage events, they're not unusual, the private drainage.
Understood. Well, then, how do the homeowners from Fox Lake, do the homeowners from Merle Crossing do nothing? What do the people at Fox Lake, how do they, do they have to form their own group and then sue the homeowners association, or something going on with that?
See, that's a, that's one reason.
I guess it's a legal question, but.
We pray that this will progress, this.
But I will say that the folks from Fox Lake say, you know, well, the city approved this plan, you know, have them work, we're getting settled.
Right. I say, it's not unusual, most of your developments in the county are, they're all like that. There's drainage events all over the place, and the county does not absolutely maintain at all. And it's between the property owners to remedy those issues. That's it.
City did not approve of that, the city group.
We didn't approve the fences in the ditch.
That's right.
No.
Matter of fact, I have control, so we're driving down to the civil side of it.
Sure. Do you like a laser pointer or anything?
I haven't been excited the whole week, but I hear anything.
Wayne's the one to pick up a laser pointer and have it.
Well, over a half million, up to 650 million dollars.
Whoa, whoa, half million up to 650 million?
600.
Oh, okay.
I got to look in.
You're trying to see if we were sleeping, weren't you, Wayne? That's what I was all about.
The city of Hoover, in Bloomingdale, years ago, put in sewer system, a direct sewer, and what they did was put in individual lines of pump stations on the houses, and they pumped to a small line of pipe, with indoor drainage. One of the solutions that we can maybe offer the population, in, I'll actually get, formal thing put together, would be for the city, go ahead and run a small line of force main, down each side of our plant drive, out from one table, make a connection point at each lot. And then, as a homeowner, had issues with their septic tank, they could install what's called a simplex, or a duplex, little pump station, in place of their septic tank that would then pump to that force main. So, the city could do their portion, I'm estimating for 35, 45,000 dollars. And then, each homeowner would have it, depending on whether, a simplex is a single pump, which means if it goes out, you don't have sewer service, you're going to be replaced. A duplex is a station with two pumps, so that you've got a backup. To do a simplex, I'm thinking, if you buy the unit and have it installed, it connects the force main, for probably 4,500 dollars. And if they want to do a duplex, it'd probably run close to 8,000. And the city could help with that, and possibly even, if we call it a standardized system, like the city of Hoover, Bloomingdale uses, then the city could possibly keep a backup unit installed, the homeowner could buy, so that they're not getting, taking good flavors, and if they needed it 2 o'clock in the morning, it would be there. So, that would be.
So, if we run that force main, are they then obligated to put that system in if they have failure with their septic?
Yes. My, my impression from the health department is, they would then take the position that city sewer was available, and they would not issue a permit at the original, original setting. If you like, I'll flesh this out and get you some actual drawings there.
Where we put that on the, upside of the, on the outside of the ditch?
Put it on the backside of the ditch. Probably what we would do is they'd get a piece from every homeowner, so we're going to get Toby out of the right away. Right aways are getting crowded, with all these underground buildings.
Not to mention, it's expensive to dig up your brand new paved road.
That's right. And this way, there'll be nothing under the paved road, Robert, for them boys, so his state projects is.
That's what I love about this Savannah project, you have any problem with that vein, you don't have to cover the dang room. But anyway. Put all our water lines under the sidewalk.
If y'all are in agreement, I'll, one lines in, and if not, we agree with Isaac's company.
How about that fee to the local?
Well, if it works out, just be prepared for ramp road.
Our recommendation, our recommendation, the council would feed the city authority ATCB, half fee, just like we've done in other neighborhoods. That's the council's decision. They're talking about 23 homes at 520 dollars combined, half fee and ATCB.